All right, I think we're gonna look over to our IT specialist. Specialist. And we're ready to get things going. Good evening, everybody. Obviously, we want to start the meeting with the pledge and then we'll kind of get right into it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic and corporate states, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, or all.
All right, good evening. Just a couple, we obviously don't have a full house tonight, but we have to go through a few house cleaning type things and announcements. Going down the list here, obviously, our emergency exits are on the side and in the back. If anything were to happen, that's where they are. There's restrooms out the back door to the left. And also be sure to sign in at the attendance sheet in the back of the room. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet you can take with you and has the emails and phone numbers of the folks up here. Please turn off cell phones as well, and it reminds myself and all of us to do that, too. And generally for a larger audience, but if there's any sidebar type of conversations the public needs to have, they could just step out and have those conversations and come back in here. It'd be extremely helpful. Everything we do is on a recording system as well. One thing that we ask is when we're referring to things in the drawings and in diagrams, try not to use like here and there, try to, you know, refer to specific sections of the map, whether it's north, south, east, or west, so that those things can be captured and recorded. We're not going to know what over here means and over there means a few days from now when Amber goes to take the minutes and things like that. So, simple things like that would be very helpful. Does anyone on, obviously, we're short two members tonight. We still have a quorum. Both Mike and Alexis had other obligations. Does anybody, Fred or Leah, do you have anything to bring up or discuss or talk about?
On the applications that were withdrawn, are they gone? Not to come back?
I believe the Gibson Mills ones, yes, and the Ted Collins one, maybe. I'm looking over at Adam.
They're withdrawn.
They're withdrawn.
Were they settled? The Gibson Mill lot line settled?
Yeah, the lot width.
They're just ignoring them?
Nope, they were settled.
They settled the lot widths. There's one of the homes that was placed too close to the other home, and they're working with Cook to probably either move the home or do something. But if they do nothing with one of the homes, they'll have to come back in for a variance from what I know. But all three have been withdrawn, and it's kind of up to them what to do next. But I had the same question earlier, but one of the homes, I believe, is ready to go, and the other one may require a variance or may not, depending on if they move it.
All right, thanks.
It was nine feet too close to the other home, which also would require a New York State variance to the fire code. And I believe in the drawings they gave us, it was, it showed it was supposed to be 12. So there's a little bit of gap between that. But anyways, not really for us to debate here today. We do, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes so that we can vote on those?
Yes, I scanned the minutes. I make a motion to approve them.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, I think that gets to our first public hearing. Mr. Crutchin? If you could just kind of step up. I know you've been in front of us before. It wasn't a variance, but I think we clarified some things for you. If you could tell us about your project a little bit, obviously, we're, those of us that kind of pre-read it, it's a little confusing. It seems like there's a lot of variances, but we'll sit tight. Also, for both applicants, both of them have to go to the county. The county hasn't responded yet, so we're not able to vote on them tonight. Obviously, we can, you know, listen and discuss it with you. You may walk away with some homework or things to come back with and help clarify for the next time, but pretty.
So basically, we opened Eastside Martial Arts in the building we're in, 7263 State Route 96. It's almost five years, and we were granted a good-sized sign, which I had to get a variance for because we at that time didn't use any, technically didn't use any frontage of the building. We were in the middle part of the building, so I had to get a variance to have a larger sign put up. So it's a, I think, 17-foot or 17-square-foot sign. But I saw that it was still very difficult for people to find us. I had a sandwich sign out there, and so we do a lot of birthday parties, a lot of Nerf Wars and dodgeball and parties, and I would constantly have people call and say, "We can't find you." So I bought some flag signs, which said various things from Nerf Wars to dodgeball to summer camps, and that seemed to help a lot. And, you know, being that we're 82 feet, I guess, from the road, that helped people to be able to find us. I didn't know at that time that they weren't supposed to say anything other than open, so they remained up there for, geez, at least three years, and I changed them out periodically and to prevent them from getting ratty. And so when we opened Eastside Golden Coin Exchange, I ordered four flags that said, two of them that said, "We buy silver," two that said, "We buy gold." Started to put those out, and Adam came out and said, "Yeah, you can't have these. They can say 'open.'" And I said to him, I said, "Okay, we've been putting the other ones up." And he said, "Well, they probably were, we probably thought they were events." So it kind of went undetected. So I said, "Okay," and in fact, ordered a, well, he said, you know, so I ordered an open sign, which is out there now, but I still have these other four. And when I ask, which I always do, people that come in, and we've been open for almost two months now, and when I ask them, you know, "How did you hear about us?", at least 75% say, "Your flags." I'm spending probably two grand, at least this month. I spent two grand on advertising, and it's okay, but our definite, the way that people see us is those, I believe, are the flags. So our sign that says, "Eastside Golden Coin Exchange," is smaller than the Eastside one. Bigger than what we expected, but still nonetheless, we find that it's difficult for people to see us. And so I notice, and I know that the village and town laws or codes are different, but for the villages, for the businesses that are 10 feet from the road, it's obviously much simpler for people to see. And I know that it looks like neon signs are allowed in the village, but not the town. Salvatore's has about a dozen of them. So we're also looking, if not the flags, which I'm told is in a county thing, that maybe we could do a light box sign, which is four foot. There's two signs, because I figured if I don't get one, maybe the other one, which is smaller, would be okay. But, and they say, "We buy gold, we buy silver." It's all one sign, but there's four panels that come together. And that would be left on preferably, you know, throughout the night, because that's the purpose of having a neon sign. But if not, then at least hopefully the hours that we're open, which is 10 to 4, weekdays and weekend Saturdays from 10 to 2. So I think without the signage, I'm afraid, and by the way, the reason we opened the second business was since COVID, our numbers have, you know, and the martial arts have probably gone down in half. So rather than closing that, the landlord said that we could use the space. You know, if I got everything okayed with the town, I could use it, you know, for the Golden Coin Exchange in hopes that I can save both businesses. And that's something I've done since I was a teenager. I've been in the coin and antique hobby. So it seemed like a no-brainer. And so far, it's okay. But I think without these signs, it's going to be very challenging. And if one business goes down, they both go down. So I know that, you know, I don't want to see Victor turn into a ghost town like Honeyaway Falls. And so I hope that there's a way maybe to, you know, to get some exceptions for these rules, or at least one of them, so that I can get a, you know, a good sign up.
Before I ask the other board members for questions, can you, it's, I'm a little confused with exactly what variances you need. There isn't one, and we've got, we've got the, you know, what you submitted in terms of the pictures of the signs, but what exactly do you need? And if ideally, you know, we'd have a picture of the front of the building, and you kind of place the signs where you want them and things like that, so we can understand it better. But what are the variances that you need?
So the flags technically can only say "open." So they can't have any other words on there. They can have pictures. And so I looked, is it, you know, to find a flag that, and these are like, you know, $60 flags, so they're not crazy expensive. But I looked into getting some ones that had pictures of like, you know, coins and treasure-looking, and, but they have to be specially made, and they start at 400 or 500 hours. Before I were even do that, you know, I wanted to make sure that having, I believe having one that says "open" isn't enough for people to know what's in there. So it's really just so I can, instead of just having a flag that says "open," specifically what's in there. As far as the neon sign, they're not allowed in the.
So backing up the first one, is this 165-4? Where is it? I've got a list here. Number, I'm looking at number two.
On the comments I submitted, you want to look at number six for the flags. So you're looking at.
The 165-6 G and H?
Yes, which are somewhat related based on the use of the flags.
My understanding is the only exception is where you can put it up for special events. You can put it up for three days 10 times a year, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And so this isn't really a special, you know, these aren't special events.
The flag can also be considered a temporary sign, which is why both code sections are cited.
So that's 165-6, and then 165-4 is the design and appearance?
So the suggestion there was just for you guys to determine. That was just a recommendation to the zoning board as far as design and appearance is considered. That would not require a variance. If we're only talking about the flags, we're talking about 1656 G and H. If we're going to talk about the window light signs, those are other variances.
Everything else, okay. But 165-4, you're saying that if the signage was in harmony with the supporting structures, that is, if we determined it was, then you wouldn't need a variance. If it wasn't in accordance or in, I guess, harmony with the structure, that's yet another variance that would have to be.
Correct.
Required, right.
And if they're not, there's loads and loads of ones that say, "We buy gold and we buy silver." So, and they're, like I said, they're inexpensive enough. If there's a different color or a different style, I'm willing to.
Sure. So we've got those two. I think there's at least three more.
There's four, but I'm only going to put up, I'm only allowed to put up one at a time.
Oh, I'm sorry, variances.
Oh, yeah, there's two variances.
Five total, right? Five total variances that are required?
Between the window lights, based on your application, you're asking, if you were to get everything you're asking for, it's going to take five variances.
Oh, okay.
Okay. One to have the sign in the window that doesn't say "open." Another part of that is to leave it on all night, which is a different section of the code.
Got it, okay. Yep, got it. And, yeah, and I think you, your response reminded, or either reminded me or I didn't know that it couldn't be, that that was another variance, the hours.
And then we're missing one more.
So then. So one is to allow a sign other than says "open," which is in 1656 prohibited signs, which is directly related to 1318 of the lighting code, which is luminance from windows in a business. So two things are happening. One, it doesn't say "open." Two, you're allowing luminance from windows, which is prohibited. And then a third one for that would be to leave it on outside of business hours. So there's three for the window signs, two for the flags, five.
And you alluded to, if I don't get this, I'd like to get that. Like, it would be good, just my last kind of comment for now, it'd be good to just know, like, and be able to see, like, what you want to do. So if I go through it, it sounds like you want to have flags that don't just say "open," and you've got four of them, and you're going to rotate them, so you still want to put one out there.
Yep.
We have to determine as a board whether the appearance of what you're doing is within character of the neighborhood. If not, it would require another variance. The lighting of the signs, I think you proposed you wanted them backlit.
They're called light box signs.
So they're LED lit from behind, right?
LED lit from behind.
So that's that lighting code, I think it was.
It's one sign, but four parts that go next to each other. My first choice would be the four-sign package. And if that, if it makes any difference, then my second would be the.
And if they, Adam, if they weren't lit, would you need a variance for a window sign?
Signage would have to, you only get so much building square foot on it. And he's already maxed out.
Okay.
Currently has signs in the window that are two square feet. Business name.
Wasn't that another variance that we don't have listed? The actual square footage for those signs?
What do those little signs in the windows say?
Uh, yeah, coins, jewelry, silver, collectibles, antiques, the things that we purchase and sell.
Well, of these, it's one or the other.
Yeah, no, I would replace those with, if I were allowed to get these, those would come down, and this would, and this would go up. I wouldn't need those.
Hold on one second, Fred. I'll get to you. So we added another, that's six, so the square footage. So that, it probably, it doesn't sound like you'd have the answer to it now. Like, how much additional square footage is it, and how to compare it? That might be something you'd want to bring in next time.
Is that a question Adam can answer? Because I know he told me last time that, how much, when I got the Eastside Gold sign, how much, how big it could be? Maxed out, okay.
So we would need to know that. The other one was, okay, you want to keep the signs on all night versus open during, or on during business hours. And then a sign that does not say "open." So those are the six. And now I will, I will stop talking. I'll turn it over to Fred for any questions, and then Leah.
Well, you would leave the "we buy gold" sign on the wall, on the building now?
Yeah, our main sign, yeah, because that is a light-up sign.
And then the martial arts stays.
Correct. We use approximately a third of the building, if that matters. Right now, it's 7,000 square feet out of the 18,000.
Well. Seems like you've got to pick one or the other.
Between the two light box signs? Between the two light box signs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your application has got to be pretty precise.
It says on there, I think I put on there what my first choice would be, somewhere I did. My first choice would be the.
The four box.
Yeah, the four that are next to each other vertical.
So those don't separate?
I don't know. I haven't, I don't have it.
It seems like they're four separate signs, based on what you submitted, because the dimensions are 12 inches by.
Yeah, they're, well, they're sold in a set. It's $800 for that set.
Right, but they would be four individual signs. They wouldn't be one.
Yes, this four-sign package.
Right.
Okay. So then if the other, if I have a better chance with the other one being one, then sure, and that one's cheaper.
You have a better chance with me with that other one.
Okay.
There's no, there's no way this resembles the neighborhood, because it's Dr. Cotello's building on the one side and an open field on the other side.
We're not Las Vegas, I understand. And I, to be honest, if we were close to the street, this wouldn't even be an issue. But we're so far back, and we have a woods between us and Dr., and by the way, he wrote me a letter. I don't know if you want me to read it. It's a short, from the medical spa. Is that something I should, or give to you?
Yeah, you can just give to us. Is it something we can take and put in the record, so?
And I just got that today. They just dropped it off today. But the woods that's between him and I is protected by, it's protected by a stream. And so when you're coming, when you're going north on 96, you don't see our building really until you get to it. Coming from the other direction, there's three trees that are between us and headlocks. And I don't know, I've asked the landlord a couple of times if we can cut those down, but those block the, so really, you don't see our building until you're going past it, which of course, you know, people are going 55, you know, 60 miles an hour. So that adds to the problem as well.
Was, is he speaking to those trees with this letter?
No, you'll have it in a minute. I would say the letter reads pretty inconclusive, because it says in there, "As long as the signage is in accordance with, you know, the look and feel of the town," or something like that. It's like the third sentence. I'm not quite sure. I would, I'd say that's a for or against, but.
Yeah, I added it to some, maybe the handwritten thing that I had to turn in, which maybe you only saw the original. They do, okay. Yeah, and there, I think I mentioned the trees or.
Any other questions, Fred?
Hey, this is more of the for than against. I don't want it to look like a cheap.
I'm not a pawn shop.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, and it's not going to be flashing, obviously.
A sign would take that many variances.
Yeah. Am I correct that they are allowed in the village, neon signs?
I honestly have no idea. So we're.
It's probably irrelevant, but.
Yeah, it's irrelevant. We're, it's like comparing us to.
Sure.
Henrietta or Honeyaway Falls or wherever. We're our own.
Yeah.
Authority here in code base, so. You good, Fred?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Well, I was going to say, this isn't Times Square. I wasn't going to say Las Vegas, but. I like the, I like the idea of flags, because they, during the business hours, it even just lets, lets all of us know that a business is open, that the hours are open. Neon signs, I'm not that crazy about. And I'll go through what I mean. You know, during the day, it doesn't, except for the sign "open," it, in this stretch on Route 96, too much of that's going to detract.
Have you ever been to Henrietta?
Well, Henrietta's very different.
I know, I'm just saying, we don't want to look like that. I understand.
No, it's different. It's six-lane, you know, six-lane roadway. And when you have one neon sign, then every business is going to want it, and it just snowballs. And that's how you see towns go downhill, because I've seen it for myself, where I used to. And another comment I just want to make, you know, as far as having it, is this mic on? Do you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Having it on during the night, I don't think is a good idea for safety reasons. Having the sign during the day and the flags, yes, because that's the customer base you're aiming for, the people who are driving by during the day.
I could put on a timer, too, if that, certain hours, you know, but yeah, I agree.
During the night, you might even attract the element you don't want, that may want to either rob your store at night or come back during the day.
Sure.
You know, during, you know, so I really want to let you know, because I'm very safety-conscious and, you know, I'm always looking out for things like that. So that's why I'm against having it at night. Now, I've driven, I've driven by your business. Now, those other, I see your martial arts sign, and I see in the window signs that say, "We buy gold." I thought I also saw, "We buy silver." You know, I'm not sure. I'm driving, so I.
They just say silver, gold. Yeah, they're two by two, two by one little signs.
They're in like each of the windows.
Each of the windows, correct.
There were like four of them.
Yep.
And they're just like posters. They're not neon or anything.
Things I printed out at Staples.
Okay. And so with this neon sign, it would just be one in one of those windows, correct?
Yep. And might I say, if I had to choose, the flags are far better. It's just that that's a county thing, and my understanding is virtually impossible to get a county, you know, code changed. So I figured, I'm a person of options, so if that doesn't work, maybe then the neon sign or the light box sign. So that was my logic.
So with the flags, you have to go to the county to have them just during business hours?
To say what I want them, to say something other than "open," correct?
All the variances that, because of the district he's in, I have to go to the county.
Okay.
Light box is not a county, though, is it?
They all would be.
Even the one on your building.
Oh, really? Okay.
Those were the comments I had.
I agree with not putting it in overnight, and if I did, we're there till usually 7, 8 o'clock at night. So even if we, in the, when it starts getting dark at 5 o'clock, you know, 4:30, 5 o'clock, my logic would be to keep it on until I leave and turn it off. I have a great security system, top of the line, and I'm going to get a dog, probably. And I have friends that have done this for years, and they've never been robbed. Not to say that it can't happen, obviously, but there's certain precautions that you take, which I believe I have, to minimize that risk.
Yeah, and these are different times now.
Yep.
Last few years, so a little more vigilant.
Yep.
So that's why I was concerned with having bright signs.
Yep, and that's why there's certain things, like I won't do, I won't buy gift cards, I won't buy electronics, video games, tools. If you stay away from those things, then you're far less likely to attract the wrong people.
That's all I have.
Two things. So I don't know if you remember when you were in front of us last. It was probably the very last few sentences of conversation we had, and I had them highlighted in the minutes, because I thought we had this conversation. It was when we were clarifying your question on signage, the last time you were in here. And I asked, I'll just kind of quote it, "What are you doing with the signage? Are you going to be back in front of us wanting a gold neon sign?" Do you remember what you said in response to that?
Probably no.
Yeah, so no, I'm not going to get anything weird.
Yeah, well, that, and to be fair, I didn't know at the time that I couldn't have those, those flags out there. So that was my.
But we're, we have six variances in front of us. And.
I thought it was two, but I understand why it's considered four.
Yeah, there's a lot of having to do with the time and the size and.
Not trying to, I'm not trying to confuse anybody or.
No, no, I understand what you're trying to do. I, I think if I just take, take the project that you've got, and I kind of also, you know, go through the criteria in my mind here, I just don't see where any of them really fit, right? In terms of, okay, "An undesirable change would or would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood." It really isn't town-like, the signage. It does allude to that, maybe, larger city, pawn shop, look and feel with those types of signs, especially lit up.
You're talking the flag signs or the?
I'm talking in general.
Because there's flags. Cause there's flag signs all over.
I, I'm just talking in general, right?
Okay.
Um, the flag signs all over, I think you're allowed one that just says open.
Although you see, yeah.
And, and hold on. But right now specifically looking at like anything on the, the, in the windows, it, I think it would just not be within the character of, of the neighborhood. Um, can the benefit sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for you to pursue? I, I think so. I, I know you said you spent a lot on, on advertising. I think maybe there's a way to minimize it. I personally would ma- would be in favor of a flag that doesn't say open. As long as it was something that we all agreed on, wasn't too, too, too crazy or too pawn shop like, I think we could.
Like what I have? Would, would that be, would that fit into that category?
I'd, I'd have to look at it again. I've got the sign package and we, like I said, we're not deciding tonight.
No, I know.
It's, um.
You mean like the open sign you got out there now?
Well, like that, but.
No, these, these, these win, right there.
Yeah.
Right? So we'd, you know, I, I, we normally don't comment on aesthetics, but something like this, we'd probably have to. Though, the whole we buy gold thing to me is like a.
That's what my main signs.
No, I know. And I, 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 like I said, I, I'm not here to comment on that either.
Yeah.
Um, that, that's within the code. It's not to me what it, what it says. But when you come in for a variance and wanna have something that says other than open, I think there needs to be, that we then have the opportunity to discuss that a little further. So to me, the, the we buy gold thing, it's, it's just a little too not town like in, 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 in my opinion, in terms of how, how it looks. So I'd be, but I would be open to something that helps delineate you a little better.
Silver, gold, just, just a word instead of we buy?
Maybe. I, I'll leave it to you to, to, to propose it. And again, I'm, I'm just one person, but the.
I mean, is there a way that, that I could ask everybody here, you know, would they be opposed to without obviously spending, you know, countless minutes here?
I, we, I would just, if I were you, I would just present what you wanna do with some options maybe in, in that regard. Um, but the, the window signs themselves, the fact that you want them lit up, the fact that you have really no additional square footage to add another sign, you've got a good size, we buy gold sign. I see it whenever I drive by. I see it lit up at night. It's front lit, which I think is okay. Um, so you've got some good visibility there. Maybe there's a way to help you out a little bit again, like with that, with that flag sign, but.
Again, that would be my first choice are those flags.
Just, just one, right, right? But, but the, the, the window signs to me are, are, I, I, I can't get.
So when I come in here in two weeks, I should bring in like what other options, like one that says silver, one that says, um, antiques, one that says, you know, whatever.
Something, but pick one.
Yeah, just, just pick one.
Yeah, I mean, pick, pick one.
Okay.
I mean, the other part, I think it would be, maybe it'd be good for the other board members to see it too. I, I think I can visualize it, but usually we'd get a picture of the, you know, the front of the building and the applicant like within the window would cut and paste a picture of the signs that you want and kinda put it to scale. So we can actually see what the front of that, you're proposing, what the front of your building would look like with the, with the signage that you wanted. Cause I'm kinda looking at it like, there's a we buy gold, then there's the martial arts. Then there's a we buy gold, silver coins and jewelry. I'm, I'm thinking of the Crazy Eddie commercials when I was a kid watching. I think it was, he was out in New York City or Long Island or something. Prices were insane, right? Um, and so that's kinda the visual I get. And then, and then the flags, right? And then the, an A-frame or whatever else that, that you wanna put out there, that you can put out there. I, I see this is just too much signage. There's gotta be a better way to get your customers there. I think you've also got a, it was a van or a truck that had, you know, signage on it as well that you use. And so, I mean.
A 40,000 hour sign.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I think, um, you know, you've been doing things to attract people to it. I just think it's, it's a, the window sign with the whole gold and jewelry is just, is just a little, is just not fitting within a town.
And I drove, you know, around a little bit and we're, myself, Q Det, uh, Q Spa, the, a few other businesses in that area are the only ones that are that far back from the road. And that's, that's really, that's why I'm asking for these exceptions. Because I think it's a special circumstance that's beyond my.
But your signage, if you drive by it, I can easily read, easily read the we buy gold and the martial arts and the Nerf, I think it says Nerf or something on there. Um, I, they gotta get, they gotta go online or something or use Google or Google Maps to find you or, or zoom them in. Uh, like I said, I just personally, as, as one board member would be willing to work with you, maybe on a different looking flag, whether it says open and maybe it's, you know, it says you put gold or something on it. But, um, I, I really wouldn't go much farther. You've got a lot of signage there. In, in, in the, what you've presented here and submitted again, just, just doesn't look very, you know, town, town like it.
And, and, and understand that if I were to get the neon or the flags, if it's, if it's part of the condition to get rid of the individual ones that say coins and so forth, so be it. But the flags are definitely, I think crucial to me. And if not, I mean, this isn't a threat, but I would seriously consider looking to move my business. Cause I really don't think, I mean, I literally, almost every person, I'm like, how did you find us? Was it the ads? Was it? Nope, the flags. I said, did you see our sign? I've been asking people since we opened, did you see our sign? And they said, no, we didn't even know you were here until we saw the flags out there. So I mean, it's, it's.
I listened to you when you said flags. So that's why I kinda right away, just honed in on a flag and said, I personally, as one board member willing to, to work with you on maybe what that flag could look like if you could.
Yeah.
Like I said, maybe, again, maybe it's something that largely says open and then on the top of it or somewhere you put gold or something that.
Those don't exist, but.
I, I, I get it. You might be talking something custom. I don't, I don't know, but, um, and I'm just, just one vote, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, balance the needs of, of you and your business with also the, the, those of the town that are also trying not to make it, also trying to keep it looking like a town.
Sure.
Um, is, is where I'm coming from. Obviously we can't vote on this tonight. I do have to say, I know if, if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak for and against. Um, we do have a letter. I'll, I'll, I can read the letter and, um, then people can determine if they think it's for or against. I think it's relatively neutral. It does, it is titled Letter of Support. It says Dear zoning board of appeals, the intent of this letter is to voice our support for improved signage to identify the business known as East Gold and Coin Exchange located at 7263 State Route 96 in Victor. Assuming, this is, and to me, this was the, the catch, assuming the proposed signage is designed in a tasteful manner and in line with the aesthetic goals of the town and neighboring business, businesses, this enhancement will allow for better identification of the businesses within the building.
Can I, can I hit something?
Yeah.
They, when I was here for my greenhouse, um, they, uh, were out here and, and they said the same thing, that they, they wanted to get the sign that listed the businesses and they were denied that, but the problem being that nobody knew what was in there and their sign's bigger than ours. And that, you know, the Walmart Plaza has theirs out there that lists all the businesses and so.
They're, they're just two completely different. All three of you are just, are applicants and lots that.
All that to say is that they're having, they're having issues being that far back from the road too. So I'm not the only one that's.
Yeah, I, I honestly don't, I, I could tell you, I'm not sure if his issue is anyone's issue is just because it's 80 feet back or is it also a business case issue? Is it a market issue? Is it a business that's not right, a right fit issue? How else are they, I mean, there's a hundred other questions other than if I just give you their sign, your business.
There's other factors, I understand.
And so.
I understand.
You know, this board heard their case and decided one way based on it, just like we're gonna listen to your case and decide one way or the other on it. Um, Walmart and everyone else had to do the same thing, uh, or working with the planning board to, to develop it. So it's, it's really tough to compare one to the other, cause it really is apples and oranges. But no, but I, I hear you. Um.
And the plazas that are far from the roads tend to have those, you know, those, those signs.
Yeah, the monuments and signs with the directors.
You know, yeah.
Yep. But like I said, when I drive by your location, I can very clearly see the we buy gold. I can clearly see the other sign for, for the martial arts. So I think we gotta, we've got a variance for that back in the day, right? When you didn't have enough square footage before you leased the, the other remaining space. So we're, we're doing what we can to.
I understand.
To, 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 to try to make this balance here. Is there any, obviously we're gonna talk about this again when's the next meeting is? So April 17th is, so we'll, I've heard from the county by then. Um, our other two board, board members will also be back. Um, so we'll have a chance to talk about it a little more. Um, and if you can, you know, take, take the feedback from, from all of us. And, um, you know, if there's something else you wanna propose, but it really would, I think, be good to see a, uh, just a, a picture with the signs where you want them, exactly where you want them, the times you want them open. So we can kinda look at one thing and say, okay, here's what he's asking for.
Would I do the, um, the neon one without ordering it? Um, would I just put up a poster?
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm, I'm just saying like if you, you took a picture of the front of your building and then literally cut and paste this in it in Photoshop or, or PowerPoint. Or draw it, or if you want, draw it on there.
And I can just bring that in with me next time?
Absolutely. Or if you can't, if you could, just email it ahead of time. So we have it beforehand.
Okay. So email is good. And then along with like what?
Yeah, like, like, you know, like this, you know, this sign, I like it open to, I like to be, I'd like the lights to be on 24 hours, seven days a week.
Okay.
This is where I would place the, the flag and here are a couple of options for the flag.
I could take a picture of a flag, the spot in front of the building. That's simple enough.
One of these windless flags with a light on it that was on till.
I don't think he asked those to be lit. I don't think he's asked those to be lit.
No.
The flags, no.
That'd be impossible anyways. Well, I'm sure it wouldn't, but.
It would replace the window.
They, I have to, I bring them in every night. I, I don't leave them out. You're not, you're not, you're not, you're not allowed to leave them out overnight anyways. And they end up blowing away sometimes. So gone through a couple that way.
Okay. Does anybody have any parting questions? Do you have any other questions for us?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm glad I'm not the only one, cause I was like, I'm like, they're probably hoping I don't come tonight, so I can just go home.
No, 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 not at all. All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 17th.
See you then.
Take care. Absolutely. All right, Valvoline.
Good evening.
Good evening. I apologize. I, uh, forgot to grab the stand on the way out.
Do we have that to maybe bring up on the screen, I think as well? Or something close?
Uh, good evening. My name is Todd Markovich with APD Engineering here tonight to discuss the, uh, property at 7503 Main Street Fishers. As most of you know, it's in a, or I should say it's a former Denny's, um, restaurant that now currently lies vacant. Um, we have been working with the planning board, as most of you guys know, uh, to, uh, get approval on a proposed Valvoline, um, instant oil change facility. It would be a three bay facility, 2,000 square feet in size. And the scope of work for that would be to remove the existing Denny's building, um, remove the parking lot. Basically, you know, reinstall a new building, new parking lot. We do new lighting, some new utilities and quite a bit of landscaping. As a matter of fact, the, the footprint of the impervious on the site will actually decrease by about 25%. So in general, it's gonna soften that, that corner up quite a bit. And again, you'll see a lot more landscaping out there. Um, we've been working with the planning board in the town for, for quite some time now and just received final site plan approval. Maybe a month ago or so at this point in time, a couple of conditions that we're, we're still trying to resolve. But nonetheless, um, here tonight to basically request a, a variance, um, per section 211 dash 22. And that's to operate the facility on Sundays where currently per the code, it is not allowed to, or specifically for a motor vehicle, um, service station. So one of the reasons or the main reason for, for the request is that Valvoline has found that they do most of their business or a good majority of their business on the weekends. During the week, their, their hours of operation are typically eight to seven. And so they find that it's somewhat difficult for customers to get to the facility, especially if people work nine to five. Um, so they get a, a, a good majority of business on the weekends. And obviously we're, we're gonna operate on Saturdays, but again, the request would be to operate on Sundays with the proposed hours of nine to five. And this would be very similar in nature to, uh, a couple of similar businesses. We've got the Monroe Muffler, um, just down the road and we've obviously got BJ's up the street at Eastview, uh, which currently operate also on, on Sundays. It would also be very similar to the existing uses, although not the same use. But if you look at all the restaurants that surround this particular property, they are all open on Sundays. You've got the car wash, you've got Planet Fitness. The only caveat to that would be the bank, which obviously is not open on Sundays. So again, from our perspective, we, we find it would be a very similar use to the character of the neighborhood, the Route 96 corridor, very commercial in nature. Um, as well as the similar uses, uh, both down the street and, and up the street. So, um, again, here tonight, just to request, uh, the variance or consideration of the variance. And I certainly understand that the county has to weigh in and the decision could be reached at the next meeting. But certainly happy to answer any questions you may have or any further comments.
Neil, you wanna leave us some questions?
The fir- first thing, even before I read, read your application, you know, ju- just, just saw the little narrative. I wondered what's open around there. And the first thing I went to look at Mon- Monroe Auto Muffler to see if they're open Sundays. And I saw they were, so to me it seems logical that this one should be. And like you said in your application, some people, Sunday is the only opportunity for them to come. Maybe, maybe to, you know, to do work on their car. And I know at one time I would have been one of those people.
Right.
I don't have any other questions. And, and you answered a lot of, lot of information about the foot, current footprint of, of the site and how, how it'll improve.
You good? Fred?
Well, the Royal Car Wash is open from nine to six on Sundays. And if they can be, you should be able to as well. Don't have nearly the traffic they have.
Correct. Yeah. And, and we appreciate that the Royal Car Wash is open and yeah, I mean, really the traffic generated from Valvoline is relatively minimal. Um, you're talking typically, it might be three or four cars an hour on average against, from the stats they're, they're telling us. And, you know, typical car stack might be three vehicles. Um, so it's not like, you know, me driving by the, our office is obviously right down the road here and we see the car wash and there's, there's quite a bit of traffic. So I don't, we don't anticipate that to be the same for this case.
Me too. That's all I got.
Yeah, I, I think that the code kinda purposely calls on motor vehicle repair, cause the, you know, the intent was you, you can envision body shops and, um, you know, the, the, the air guns, the hammering, the pounding and, and all of that. I, I think like a very similar sit- situation is the, the car wash, which also I think got a variance for, for their Sunday. You're not like doing any body repair or any major work on cars. You're largely doing, you know, oil filter changes, maybe tire rotation, those types of things. You're not doing bodywork on a car.
Correct. Yeah. And if, you know, I should have or could have provided some additional information, you know, that was some of the concerns the planning board had, um, with respect to, you know, potential noise and the vis- visual effects. And again, we submitted some, some, uh, you know, photos basically of some existing facilities. Again, cause a lot of people, you talk about a, a motor vehicle service station, we all have that old mom and pop shop in our heads. Totally different now. It's very clean. There's no product on the shelves that's visible. There is no major mechanicals. Um, the air compressor's down in the basement, you know, there's no hanging hoses. It's, it's a much different situation. So yeah, they do the, the oil changes, um.
Can I ask if it would be similar to like the Valvoline in Canadagua?
Exactly. You know, it's very similar to probably any that you guys know. I know there's one in, you know, Henrietta, there's one 12 Corners area as well, kind of, uh, Pittsburgh.
Since we've got time for next, would you be able to submit a list of services that?
Yeah, we can. So I could submit, we could submit some services. We could submit kinda some of those photos. And again, it's our, not to say arguments, but some of the points we brought up to the board to, planning board to help them understand that again, it's not this noisy, you know, light emanating thing, you know, the, the lights, they're not re- they're, they're recessed. So you don't see those, um, you know, again.
No neon signs, no.
No neon signs.
I always say this to everybody and every now and then, as you can see, I get them. Um, but you're not gonna be back in, back in front of us wanting additional signage.
We're, we're still working on the sign package.
So we are still working. And again, through the planning board, we, we originally proposed three signs in the building, two were allowed. And so we've removed that on the backside. There was, there's three service bays and I can't recall the exact words, but they wanted them reduced. So we have just one, two, three. Um, you know, we, we enhanced the building. It was originally a prototype. Now we have a brick and we have, you know, so they're definitely, I think a good fit for the community, very similar actually. so they're definitely, I think, a good fit for the community, very similar, actually, field, kinda the windy, so it's, it's kinda harmonious. We also sit pretty far back off the, the roadway. Um, you know, so again, it's not gonna be in your face regardless. And there's gonna be, you know, again, landscaping, we can submit a landscape plan, there's gonna be quite a few more trees, bushes, to make that even more
Yeah, anything that would just give us a visual, I think would, 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 would only help. And, and I think with the three of us up here, you, you get a, kinda read where you think, how, how we would vote. Um, one thing too, how, how, what would be the closest residence to this? I can't imagine there's anything within five hundred or a thousand feet.
I, I don't think there's anything within five hundred.
Yeah, I mean, you've got the, if you can hear it through the roar of the thruway, um, it'd be all right. So I, you know, in terms of, I, I don't think it would, you know, be detriment to the, you know, the environmental characteristics, I think it would fit within the neighborhood in terms of the time. Um, the if, just to go through the criteria, um, you know, really quick, um, I don't think a, an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood. Um, you've been working with the planning board on, obviously, making the aesthetics work, but really in regards to just the hours of operations, there's plenty of other, um, similar, um, entities that operate in the same way. You're, you're not a body shop, you're not doing major auto work, repair, which I think is really what the intent of that code was, kinda specifically targeting motor vehicle repair shops on a Sunday. Um, and there's also no residences near you that would, would be harmed by, by such action. Um, and the benefit sought by the applicant, um, cannot be achieved by some method feasible to the applicant to pursue. I, I think the, um, you know, the op, the hours of operation are, are very reasonable, uh, for Sundays. And again, in accordance with other buil- building, businesses within that district. Um, I'd say that it's, you know, the, is the requested area substantial? I'd say that it is substantial, asking for, for an extra day in those hours, but, um, really, that's, um, not something that, that weighs down heavily on the other five criteria. Um, just my two cents there. Um, I don't think the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, we just talked about that. Um, and yeah, you know, the difficulty is self-created, but, um, that really isn't a, a major factor in determining a yea or nay on this. Um, we, we can't vote tonight, obviously, we gotta wait for this to come back to the county. Um, I appreciate the detail, I, I do think, you know, just being able to have, um, a visual or two, you know, so, so really, to me, it was really just kinda the list of having on record just the list of services that, um, you'll, you'll have there. Um, and I'm out of questions unless, Fred, do you have anything else you wanna ask? Or you have questions for us?
Got it all covered.
I think we're good.
Just, um, one, one good thing, being that you're so close to the thruway, somebody who's passing on the thruway who maybe needs some service, they can, they can stop, and, and, you know, if they're open Sunday, that's a good thing. That happened to me once. I didn't realize I needed an oil change that quick. And I was on my way to Newport, Rhode Island, and I had a look on Google Maps, found the place, and was able to stop. So that, that's a plus for the business, for your business.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate it very much. We'll see you again in a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, seventeenth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I do wanna say, ask if anyone from the public would like to speak for or against. Is there anybody online as well? Okay.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
We have a motion to, oh, before I, I said, are there any questions, comments, or anything we wanna discuss for the next meeting? Like I said, we'll have a full board next time, we'll have the comments back, uh, from the county on the two that we had. I also think next time we've got, at four thirty, we've got the training.
Well, we know what the county's gonna say on the sign job.
Yeah, the, the county says, well, yeah, says the same thing. But, but to be honest, with or, I mean, well, I'll talk about it, but with or without the county, it's a tough self. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's tough, but anyways, um, a motion to will we close the public hearings and the meeting?
Move.
Second.